It is nine o'clock, we'll open up our regular work session of March the third, twenty twenty. Please silence or shut off your cell phones and join us in the place please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, additions or deletions?
Yeah, I have one addition, it will be personal property tax forgiveness from Mr. Dave Knowles. And I need to switch David Berman as a presenter to Tom Andrews.
Alright, we were gonna be done in thirty-five seconds then Tom should uh. Welcome this morning, Tom. Go ahead, you have qualification for professional services, airport recommendation. Do we, we do have a little bit paperwork on it, go ahead.
Yeah, we uh, we looked over, well, who we are, we had the airport advisory board, we put back together. Mark Albertson, Dave Berman, myself, Tom Andrews, Bruce Weapon and Lisa Weapon were on that advisory. So we, uh, the FAA wanted um, as many people as we could get together um, on the advisory board. So we had a good mix of going over the, the four proposals that we did get. And it was unanimous at the end, the Century West would fit our purposes the best out there at the airport community. So um, it was really a quick decision, they, everyone would do over one night. And the, the next day we were able to come to the conclusion that we want to select Century West as our new engineers for the airport.
Okay, so um, with that, is there a contract that's coming to? What kind of approval do you need from us, is the recommendation from the advisory and from you? So was it a, an actual bid or that they?
Well, yeah, it's a.
Or was an RFQ?
It's an RFQ that goes out, and the FAA actually is the one that, it's their federal funding that will provide the money for the, for the engineers. So, uh, but we had to go through their, the FAA process in order to select. And there, all four companies were, were well qualified, but we felt like Century West knew. Uh, they've been doing the P and P program for the payment management program for the state. And so they've already, they've had their, their, their guys out here quite a bit over the last six years, so.
Okay, so, so tomorrow we'll take that recommendation into our consideration. And uh, the official thing that we would do is to accept the amendments, the professional services uh, for the airport and then the contracts come on down by the way the money's come available for the engineering and everything, is that correct?
Yeah, that's my understanding there.
Okay.
And um, Dave has uh, paperwork, you know, for contracts and stuff, I, I'm assuming that, that he'll be taking care of that part, so.
I'm just trying to think if we, we approved them, we should be signing something with them. So that'll probably come on down, the files will fill later.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and that part there, I don't know what Dave already has in place. He just needed somebody here to, to make sure everybody was on the same page.
So alright.
For, for getting that pushed through there, so. They should be, they should be pretty good qual- pretty good qualifications for what we need. They know our projects, they know where we're gonna, we're gonna try and, what's happened is the state didn't get the money. They thought they were gonna have to, to re-slurries seal the taxiways, taxiway Alpha and Bravo. Well, all right now, in our, in our five-year plan with the FAA, taxiway Charlie, which would be in the east side, the new taxiway that's parallel with the runway. That's what was in the plan, starting to engineer this year and going into next year. But um, without the state having the money to, to do the slurry seal, we're, we're going to request that the FAA use that money towards taxiway Alpha, for sure. Otherwise, we've got a brand-new runway, a brand-new parking area, and the taxiway is gonna start falling apart on us. And the state said they probably won't be able to do anything for three years. And in the, in three years, their evaluation is that the pavement will be to the point where they won't do anything at all.
Yeah, so, so you're in a preservation mode?
Yeah.
Do some preservation on that.
So we're gonna, and Century West already knows all the process, they've been through it, they know the pavement benefit program. So it, it, it'll be good to have them on our board and have the information how we're there to request with the FAA to change our, our plan and justify that, so.
Very good.
Well, I'm, I'm good.
That's what it's at.
I'm good with this, uh, if we approve it today, we can, if there's anything that we are, that it would be necessary for us to sign, we can sign it at a later date.
I am, and we're going all the way to Christmas Valley, we might as well take what we can for an agenda there. At least we'll have something to act on tomorrow.
Sure.
Look at, look then our agenda.
Yeah, yeah, we could, we're going to act on it tomorrow, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I just am curious.
But we probably won't necessarily have any signatures or any papers to sign necessarily.
No, we're just accepting the recommendation from the.
Yeah, I, I drink for Century West for professional services.
Yeah, so, uh, any other questions on?
No.
Being, being I got you here.
Yeah.
I, I had talked with Jennifer from the Desert Cruisers and uh, they have a contract with county for the racetrack over there. And I told them they needed to get an X on the end of that raceway, and she texted me that they did. I would, I don't know if she talked to you or anything, but would you follow up, make sure that, so that we're in compliance over there? Uh, that was pretty concerning when I rise out there and it was faded and gone.
Yeah.
So, um, you'll probably see when you fly over it, that she had texted me that had been taken care of, so.
Okay.
Just one of those things that we don't need FAA to be on us on another part. So, sounds like they're, they're going to try to do some things over there, so. In the future, you know, we, we really need to, we as a county, uh, have Dave get that surveyed off, make that a tax, a separate tax lot, just for FAA reasons, because racetracks are not supposed to be on.
Yeah, they kind of ran all of it in because of where it was at, so.
Yeah, yeah, so we, we can get that cleaned up, but anyways, that's, I believe is good news that they're starting to get active over there.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Well, then they've got a little bit better entrance and they have to start with, too, with solar project.
Yeah.
Using that gravel, that one road, so.
Yep.
Gives a little something there.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a part of economic development when they, when they're, they're up and running, how that function will, are good over the years, so. Just a little bit of history, that it originally started as a hangar house at the airport in the hangar.
Right.
And they used to race on the airport itself. That's a whole lot of years ago, but yes.
And all that had to change, huh?
Yeah, yeah, definitely had to change.
Yeah, especially being that you're in preservation mode.
Yeah, we don't wanna, we don't need any warmed-up slicks on the new runway either. Although it'd be fun, no?
You are sort of more of a motorhead, you know?
So, yeah.
Anyways, appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Bye. We have Darwin land order sale for action tomorrow.
Thanks for your time this morning.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, uh, trying to do every spring, we prepare an order for the properties that were foreclosed on uh, for tax, taxing purposes. This year we had sixty-three properties on our list, of which four I'm recommending that you hold on to, three of which are in sage grouse core habitat, and then the other one just south of um, the road department property. And uh, just west of the man camp, county-owned property as well. So, um, the other properties that are on here that, that I do recommend that we sell together as one unit would be hundred forty-four, forty-five. The adjacent lots with one home already existing and, and outbuildings on, on the one lot and a home on the other. So it would make most sense to, to sell those as a, as a package deal. I'm working with the assessor's office to get a few of these corrected and some evaluations in that. Some improvements were listed on the other account.
Are those the ones in Christmas Valley?
Yeah, the ones in Christmas Valley. And also, uh, the, um, couple of these, there's three that are manufactured homes. They are not um, attached to the land at this point, so we will, we're going through the process. I already talked with Dave Knowles' assessor and, and got him working on that. As a lot of times, you know, it's a personal property, manufactured home on, on the land. It hasn't been um, be titled to, to be attached to the land, become real property. So there's a separate process and, and all those were um, behind the taxes as well, uh, greater than the time um, needed to, to have us foreclose on.
We do have that in front of us now.
Oh, good, good.
I don't know if Dave is gonna come down and talk to us.
Um, I don't know.
Okay.
I.
I can go reach you in just a second after this, but yeah, I mean, the, the process would have been the same. But this has happened before where it happens after, but thankfully we're on topic right now. There's a, there's about a thirty-day process, I believe, so um, we have plenty of time before the sale to make that happen. I, I also do wanna point out that we definitely have everybody out of the houses this time, um, that we, we have, so we don't have anyone.
Don't change yourself.
There's nobody, there's nobody in those houses.
Well, yeah, yeah, lots of them are, you know, and inside of the slasters and even ones that.
We didn't think there were gonna be any, but in this one over here, and yeah.
But it is boarded up, thank, thank our crew for getting out there.
Yep.
Getting that all boarded up to make sure you don't keep like, spotting there, so. So yeah, tomorrow you guys can make this order, um, whether we do get it recorded and.
Well, I, I just wanted to make sure, and I'm, I'm almost positive that the board's in agreement, but the history, then the core habitats, whatever, the core habitat. We have uh, been not selling those properties, and that's our way of preserving core habitat. Or the future argument if they want to list correctly, sage grouse. And so, where that, we do have two new board members, I wanna make sure that they're also interested in doing that.
And so.
I wanna speak for.
Later, later in the year, I'd love to present to you guys a, a list of all the properties that the county has, that, that um, how we gathered them, a number of years ago, probably six or seven years ago, I put such a list together as the first two COVID-lane sales. And, and we put that list together showing how we acquired all the county-owned properties and, and then sold a lot that had been on our list for prior years. And uh, it's important to see that every once in a while, keep it fresh in our minds of what properties we have out there that we got um, on, that are not on the tax rules, but that are in our ownership that we need to figure out what to do with. And a lot of them are in core habitat, a lot are up on Heart Mountain, um, and, and because of that, we need to engage with, with, you know, BLM, I know it's a long process, or, or even US Fish, or O D W as well, and just see what.
I, I, I would love for you to bring that, those forward again, so we could have those discussions. Um, just around the edges of all of it, we're, we're not supposed to sell for, for good reasons. The ones within the refuge, uh, there has been threat for many years of that becoming a refuge from Heart Mountain to Shell. Monument being designated out there. Heart Mountain took the catalog many years ago, so commissioners before my time made a decision to not sell those, those inholdings. And those would be used as a tool if it was ever, special interest groups had ever forced that before. With the, the BLM having one point seven million acres of wilderness characteristics, moves right towards what the fear was of all those commissioners back in the eighties and nineties. Another one I can just think of off the top of my head, we'll have this discussion in full, that we own mountaintop, forty acres down here south. We kept it over the years, 'cause this mountaintop's so good for um, repeaters and antennas, that if there's ever a need to, and if there ever powered, there's a mountaintop there. That's something that needs to be looked at periodically, and those things, and then the core habitat. And then along the railroad tracks down south, the town of those oval lots on the backside of the railroad, on the west side. It's not part of the industrial park, but those for future growth and maybe extending to industrial park are making the spur for rail. They've always been held on to. Then naturally, what we recommended today, that's the man camp, let's try to get that all cleaned up, so.
Right.
That, that's just brushing on some of the.
Yeah, absolutely.
But, but knowledge is, is good.
Primarily on, yeah, primarily on the core habitat, we focused on the core habitat, not in low density.
Yeah, not low density, there was three in low density that, that I recommend, so.
Yeah, right.
What we'd really like to see is, get into this, is fish wildlife review to map, because some of that low density is, you know, there hasn't been a seat dropped there for a few years.
Well, that was actually something that we talked about at one of our meetings after the Anna buyer that we just had a few years ago, where uh, they have their Lex in the middle of their low density and core habitat, where the fire went through there, there's nothing there anymore, and uh, none of the sage grouse habitat. They could, would consider sage grouse habitat as present, so, but the Lex are still listed. And it's still listed as low density and core habitat, so.
Plan Commission will have a file on the, on their agenda this, this month, for available in the sage grouse right north of Carlin.
Well, well, and, and two things that the professionals brought forward is fire and noxious weeds are the biggest threat.
Correct.
And once those happen, then now what do we have?
It isn't their adjustment that needs to take place because of that, but just, just thoughts on that.
And really the maps need to reflect what the baseline's already showing, the service level's already met a threshold of three percent or greater that, and says that's not habitat anymore, so Carlin Lane, for example, would not be habitat. But two months ago, the plan commission also approved a water bottle facility that wasn't appealed to you guys, right on Carlin, an existing home, and, and um, the maps dropped down to that area. However, the, the rule, uh, sage grouse rule actually says that's not habitat because of its farm residential comprehensive plan designation and full exception. So um, you know, it still has an agricultural zoning, it's, uh, it's comprehensive plan, kind of sets that to not. So it was, it was an interesting finding, but O M W didn't appeal it, so I think that shouldn't be grounds for future applications in that area to say that, even though that's mapped, and we're gonna fix the map, but at this point, we're not, we're not gonna regulate sage grouse and that subdivision, so.
It, it, to the board on, Commissioner Waters, has the board ever done a land swap with the BLM? With some of these properties that we hold on to?
Absolutely, just before my time, there was a land, congressional action, but there's land swap, that's how the county ended up owning the ski hill.
Got it.
Uh, quite a bit of the BLM grounds out there, it's forest, up here with BLM, uh, there's quite a bit of properties and, I believe, dollars, exchanged hands to acquire the ski hill. So it does happen, but it takes congressional action, so that's, that's the challenge a lot of times on that. Now then, um, those inholdings that say within National Refuge can be just given, given our sole, relatively cheap to another government agency, right, our taxing districts and on and on. That's only, and that's just just prior to my time, about two thousand, about ninety-nine or two thousand, whenever, ski hill got finalized. But I, if, if you're interested, I, I just looked at Jacob Key, she was very, that process, and Congressman Walton.
We know a landowner that's currently has a hundred and sixty acres, that's gonna be attempting to do a swap with the BLM, where it's completely landlocked and trying to get some land adjacent to what they're, you know.
Correct.
It's all by BLM.
Because they bought it.
Swapping out, yeah, so.
I, I think.
Perfect thing, we need those things to happen.
Yeah, it'd be really nice if, if there was a clean fast way for that to happen, I, I don't think.
Well, streamlining the NEPA process, I think, helped a little bit with some things, but I think, yeah, that I don't know what that congressional action actually looks like, you know?
Yeah, I, I don't know, it, it can.
It's frustrating, I mean, it's common sense type stuff, with easy swaps to put things.
Yeah, right.
That really have no business being private in, in the middle of landlock to get it out, or there's other landlot, my private, to be all your stuff. Right, those are easy swaps.
Uses a property with zero access, zero road, and their private piece of stuff.
So take that process, I, I, I need.
Well, I can get on my family again, but I'm going to for just for a second, because I'm gonna get this over with. But in the, I'm, so don't go there, thank you for that, so.
Okay, alright.
On the, on the wilderness characteristics, they're able to draw and keyhole lands that are private and even BLM roads, and take it out of wilderness characteristics. And it seems like if they can take and say that has wilderness characteristics, even though there's a ranch right there, they should be able to figure out a way to swap land with their ranchers, if it's beneficial for both, for the government. Anyways, yeah, depends on what.
So lastly, I'll be with you guys tomorrow, Christmas Valley, and uh, I will have projector with me and my laptop, the county laptop, to be able to um, just show people um, what, what we have available. Amy came in now with the library, because we do have uh.
That was.
Three commercial properties right across from EMS, water district, all that and stuff right there, um, pretty much on green track. Two of which on Holly Lane, and then the other one is right on Christmas Valley Highway, just across from the McDonald's. But, you know, I'm not recommending you hold those, although it's kind of a toss-up, I mean, you could definitely probably find another government agency to work with, but, you know.
Well, let's hear what Amy has to say.
Hello.
Welcoming.
Hello.
We have, we, we have a couple of commercial lots in Christmas Valley.
She knows, she knows.
Yes, we sat down and chatted a little bit. Um, so.
You bring your chair up.
Carol, join the group here.
Sounds good.
Okay, so I guess maybe just a nutshell, obviously, we need a new facility in Christmas Valley for the library. The one we had had every problem this space had when it was a library, only even smaller and more compact. Um, so that's the long-term vision, um, how to make that work is the question. So at the moment, we're kind of in talks with the We Can Foundation about whether we could do a joint kind of incubator building, library situation for the north end, since they don't have an incubator. They have a lot of people that do things out of their home that might be able to do it better if they had a better space. Um, so it's very, very early days. Our recommendation, we did a needs assessment uh, summer of twenty eighteen, where they, we had hired a professional to come and say, hey, how much space do you need for what kinds of things for a library? It was about five thousand square feet. Of that, about a thousand square feet was kind of meeting room, public area kind of stuff. Um, and so we're seeing if we can kind of work that with an incubator where space can be shared and multi-purpose. So obviously, we need a place to put the thing, um, and that is why Darwin and James have gotten me into the Darwin, 'cause there's a couple lots over there. Um, we're, you know, as I said, we're really early days, so it's a matter of would you be willing to maybe set a parcel to aside for this particular land sale while we have some time to um, explore the options that are available to us? Um, and whether that would be a good fit or not.
I think it's a excellent thought and idea.
Good.
But that, that, that is, um, we done some sort of similar, but they had buy-up for the head start on foreclosed land. And when foreclosed land can be valuable for community as far as having services there individually, I think it's a great idea. And it doesn't really harm us to hold one back.
Right. Exactly, 'cause if it doesn't work out for those particular sites, you can put them on the land sale at the next sale, you know, it's not, it's not a huge, I don't think, cost to anybody to just.
So the uniqueness to it is, for me is, is you're talking, I think, We Can as nonprofit.
Yes, it is, uh-huh.
Yep, you're a taxing district.
Yes.
Taxing districts are pretty simple for us to get properties to.
Okay.
Nonprofits is another thing. So.
Okay.
If we were going to look at giving that to library for a library, that's what we'd probably do.
Okay.
Who you brought in as a partner later on would probably be up to you.
Okay, that makes sense, yeah.
You know, and, and I like the partnership idea and everything, but uh, and, and Darwin's sort of sitting there thinking, I can tell, but, but for the right process with land sales and stuff, the process is much cleaner and simpler if we go to another taxing district.
Okay, that makes sense, yeah.
And so, um, once the deed's in your name, your taxing district's name, then you would be creative on the way that you make the community the best it could be.
Okay, well, and at the library, you know, we have our friends as a five oh one C three, and they have a portion of the space that they use to operate the library rooms. We, we have a model that we've used before, that's been successful, so.
Right, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I, I love what you're talking, I'm just thinking for our process, the cleanest and the best if we were to do something. Um, how big are those lots?
They're a third of an acre.
So.
They're not adjacent, but we got sell the middle one recently, so I'm gonna reach out to require a owner and see.
They're not adjacent, but they're there.
See if they can place one, so that there could be two together.
If they could swap, because honestly, if they did put move them together, it would increase your lot size.
Right.
It would be more suitable for you, and it would increase their property value.
Right.
By having a library next door, who wouldn't wanna have a library next door?
Right. Right, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's, it's useful, and that whole area there, I think, really kind of needs to be developed. And there, there's a lot of room for development.
There is.
And the Christmas Valley, the center of the town is kind of down the road.
And we, ideally, we'd like to be closer to there, we don't know if we can get there.
But. Right. But you can kind of, you really, I mean, the center of Christmas Valley on the map really ought to be right there, on that, on that corner.
Is it, the way that that falls, yeah.
Just a way, and so it would be nice if we could get some more development right there, um, near the emergency buildings and everything else.
Right. Right.
Build it and they will come.
Build it and they will come.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and I, I have building another park even, or something like that.
Right, exactly.
They spark a lot more than commercial uses of the area.
Right.
So you're, you're here today basically requesting us to give, hold those off to land sale.
Just to hold it, to give us time to explore the property, or to explore the E P F.
So, so they can have to explore your taxing district.
Right now, that's.
And so, so here's, here's where, where I will look up between, between uh, today and tomorrow's meeting.
Exactly, yes.
The law behind switching from, from us to another government agency, I'll look up that law to have a pretty good review for the month, how easy that is compared to a nonprofit. But also, in the past, I know we've still listed a property, put it on the, what has to be advertising the paper list, and then still hold it last minute, and that, that way, we've done the advertising, I believe we have to do, and then can still at some point, so.
Yeah, and that's why it would, that's agree with me too.
Okay, now it's still.
So, so.
Yeah, yeah.
For.
'Cause that gives us a little more time to explore, and you're, and you haven't lost any ground, yeah.
We can hold, we've pulled up. Yeah, and we've pulled up to the day of.
So. So, for tomorrow, I would rather not really muddy the waters, either we hold it or we don't. And the, for you to be able to research that other stuff, that's, that, that's, that just takes time and that's something to do.
Yeah.
Um, that, that.
We'll have muddy waters tomorrow, one way or the other, so, yeah.
Yeah, well, it is, it is, it's gonna be clear, it's gonna be, it's gonna be clear.
Yeah.
That's what we.
Yeah, yeah, but.
Clear, but, well, well, I, you know, it's, we can hold them, uh, but sometimes whenever we say quite a bit in these public meetings, people expect it to happen right away.
Yeah, exactly, I agree with you.
And, and, and we need to hold this for time for you guys to do the research.
And it's gonna take time.
And possibility, yes.
Yes, it is, yeah.
Yeah, and because of, um, some people just believe it's gonna happen overnight, and.
Right, 'cause money grows on trees, and one of the things we're saying.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, I don't know, um, you, you may qualify for a C D B G grant.
And that, I actually have, Betty Riley gave me some um, links to the C D B G program, which it sounds like that would be something we have to talk about together, 'cause the.
The money passes through the county to get to the.
Yeah, exactly, it's, there's rules around who can get it, and it's the local municipality, and there's, obviously, there's no town entity up there.
We are the local.
So you're the local municipality, so, and that's part of what we're researching as well, yeah.
So, uh, this is gonna be made tomorrow, but I think the recommendation coming from Darwin would be to hold those two off to build research for potential for um, library slash other uses.
Public uses.
I, I, I think that we may have some people say, well, there isn't much commercial property available, we would like to have those on the land sale. But I'm speaking for me, I'm comfortable with this thought because of whenever you build the libraries and things, those communities will usually flourish. But I'm speaking to me, I'm comfortable with this thought because of whenever you build the libraries and things, those communities usually flourish around some of those things.
Yeah, it's true, they can be an economic engine for further development.
Yep.
And the other thing too, that Darwin and I were talking about, because of the limited commercial availability, I'm also gonna reach out to the health district board because they have that second parcel, which is already off the rolls as a government property. And so would they have any interest in such a project as well? And that way, we have kind of multiple options um potentially, who knows, they might just tell me
Right. Well, this this will stim- stimulate a lot of a lot of discussions as it happens right now too, so.
Pack my suitcase, go ahead. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep, so we look forward to a recommendation from Darwin tomorrow on that.
Alright, perfect. Do you need me tomorrow or are you good or hello? Thank you, guys. I appreciate your time.
You bet, yeah.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hey, and thanks for being so efficient. I was like, gosh, they're already on it. Yes.
We were gonna be fast and then Mr. Knowles.
Um I think that I do. I just gotta look at my calendar.
Got him.
I know.
Go on up, Mr. Knowles, you're next, I yeah, you're up.
I'm not on the internet.
Stick around.
This is another housekeeping issue. So I brought before before in last month, some manufactured homes with either deceased ownerships or demolished homes or a combination of all that we wrote off, which needed to occur. What was not on my radar was personal property mobile homes on other properties that we've foreclosed on. So we're looking at two properties today um that have personal property mobile homes in foreclosure mode, that we don't pull the trigger on, we don't want. Our office or the county does not want to have the responsibility of paying rent. On a manufactured home for the responsibility of, so that's reason why they have a lot of for us. Our personal property mobile homes are way behind on taxes. It should have been foreclosed on, but we don't want to own them, so we go with this. But we have an in particular case, uh now I apologize if I didn't take with you, we have two different homes that are on uh county owned lands been foreclosed on. And for them to go through the sale process properly, we need to act on these homes, even county land and then make them, I will create them, make them real, attach them to the ground. And they will sell as a real property mobile home and home to.
That that was the key thing after my question right there, I already hit Darwin, you you're taking it, is we.
So by saying.
They will be part of the property through the land sale.
So what makes a personal property on a personal property is is when the ownership is is divorced from the land and the and the home. Somebody owns a home, somebody else owns the land. In this case, the county will own both, and that's when they're like that, then we create real property. It simplifies the tax, it makes it a lot better, it's cleaner exchange, a lot better English.
And I'm done with you.
Alright, I will leave.
You answered my one concern.
And we get the signature off of Jim Bailey.
I'm sorry, I'm not speaking for you.
No, that's fine.
So anyway, this is just a housekeeping thing, but it's uh something I need to get done and I'm I'm thankful for Darwin to bring it to my attention because frankly, I'm not on the radar as far as what's coming up on the foreclosure side and what he's got to deal with on the sale side on his side.
Yep.
And and in the past, we've seen train wrecks where this was never brought to our attention and then so a guy buys a piece of property and it went home on it and it's just, you know, it's a mess. So Darwin's doing his job.
Well, thank you guys for being a part of the county team and doing the right way. Appreciate it very much.
You got it.
Yep, appreciate it.
Thank you, Dave.
To you guys.
Alright. So we have the June to cover department update, we don't have no department updates today unless you have anything, no. Um liaison updates, you have anything, sir?
No.
I have um uh uh one update, I've been uh been working on the water and sewer issue out at the paragrams.
Okay.
Um so I've come up with um I met with uh the town public work director, I've met with uh Roundup, I've met with Fair, I have fair board meeting tonight. Um and I've met with a plumber, Ken Van Huzen, and have a good good draft idea of how to add the water out there.
Okay.
And a good way to do to address the sewer problem, the the bathrooms underneath the grandstand.
Yeah.
Come out and they have nineties, so naturally high use of nineties have been back up. And then there's some trees there that roots have gone in those.
Yeah, right.
The town is a rotor router those, but build to take and put sweeps in those instead of the nineties. Go to pass the trees and hook into the sewer line, so that's relatively simple, just labor. So what I'm I'm planning on doing is um a portion coming from the Roundup cost wise, a portion coming from the paragrams cost wise and coming to the board commissioners, asking for the video lottery dollars for some, I don't have those numbers absolute yet, so I'm not gonna bring them out there. I've been able to end labor will be volunteered. And I may ask whenever it comes time also if um if the county employees uh similar to whenever we done the grandstands, that when I painted those or departments that would allow employees to come down and help for harsh day or day. It's it's gonna be groundwork and be ditch digging and that kind of stuff, um but that type of stuff. So I've kind of moved quite a quite a ways forward, Roundup has to have to um there is a request to them. Fair board has to act on the request before I come to the board commissioner. Um but it's a positive thing, that would take two of those issues off, that was brought to us, I take the water issue off and that would take the sewer issue off. The water issue, I've made sure um what I'm talking is a two inch trump line. Water was out, two inch for a hundred feet, down to one inch, two year spigots. Checked up building permits, checked on everything, checked up the number of fixtures by the capacity of that line that it can handle. Everything says there would be plenty of pressure with the two inch line.
Yeah.
Uh we would have to, yeah, we would have to put a meter in and a two inch uh backflow device which is required. It'll all be done permitted tonight. And this would not be going out to Roberta. This would be hooking on to right there for the re-ryder, it is the fire hydrant. The fire hydrants come down the level, talk to the town, there's more than enough capacity, it's within the guidelines, and there's more water than we can use there. The problem.
So that's actually gotten a lot closer then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's still going to be total number of feet will be twenty four hundred feet of line. And the the trump line would stop out at the ATB crack, it'll be two inch all the way there for future build. It'll stop at two inch on this site, forty five solar county for future growth. So it's not just capacity for water, it's going to have capacity for some future growth.
Right.
Trying to find it that way, so put quite a bit of time into log meetings, bringing the people together.
Yep.
Um and then I want to make sure to keep commissioners aware of my intention of coming forward.
Right, sounds good.
Anyways.
Um uh just as long as we're on it, I did think we've I've got a, I'm gonna be down at BLM today, we're gonna be discussing um some uh topics for internet and some better uh internet options in the north end of the county. And of course, Zayo is uh has their line that's going through the county.
Yep.
There's some really good opportunities there and uh they uh BLM, I think the last day to present comment on that easement is tomorrow. And the the I emailed Todd Forbes last night, I haven't heard back yet, but we were going to we're gonna meet down there to today, not Todd and I, but Tara McLean. I'm gonna try and stop by to see her, just to kind of give you an update of where I'm gonna be later today.
Okay.
And also at one o'clock, I have a, no, eleven o'clock, I have a meeting at the hospital in regards to the disaster unit again. So we're kind of working through the final stages of that and I'll have some more information pretty good.
Excellent. On the comment period, um closing tomorrow, um.
I'm not sure what comment we would necessarily give at this point, and that's what I'm wanting to talk to Tara about, so.
Well, and if that's where I was going, then I I I want to.
If we have to put something together at the last minute.
Well, exactly, I would like to tell you I have support. If you needed to put a comment in that the county commissioners support the right way being approved for the fiber come through.
Right. And that's what I was thinking, something simple, something something out there, that'd be great. So that's why I'm bringing that forward, obviously.
So I don't we um by consensus agree to that if it's necessary, but.
Yeah.
Because of, we're gonna be out of town tomorrow, the time may.
That's true.
It may, you may need to put that letter in this afternoon, you might have to email mail to throw that letter together and.
Right. Close of business tomorrow is when is is the end of the.
Okay, yeah, you you.
Comment period.
Anytime we can get that fibers through our community and.
This line is going straight through our county. And my understanding is actually that there's several members of Zayo have requested to meet with our internet improvement committee. And so we're going to be discussing that with them, but they have the line is going from you until the county to Reno. And it is cutting right through the center of town, but it doesn't necessarily break out, and that's what our conversation is going to be. About whether or not we can get it to break out right here in Lakeview, because if it does, and they are scheduled to be done by the end of twenty twenty two. It would be instantaneous redundancy for Lake County.
Very good work on that. And I know a lot of those discussions are.
There's a lot of people that are doing a lot of work on this and honestly, Steve Vance at the hospital has been doing most of the legwork along with Evan Reese at the ESD. They are the main champions of this and the leaders of our committee. And we've been trying to be, we have taken some extra steps for some discussion even just last night to ensure privacy for many of our other providers and uh ISPs in the county. So we wanna we wanna just be cognizantly aware of that as we as we're advocating for the best interests of Lake County. And trying to be good participants and uh.
You 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 said the one key thing that I've heard over the years and I'm by no means as close to knowledgeable on fiber redundancy. And that's when the biggest thing for the potential for breakouts or breakouts in the future or whatever. I think it's uh that we need to show support to the BLM because they have the big say in the right way side of it.
Right.
You got my nod of support for the right of A to B for.
Okay, sounds good.
If you need to be as the board, speak as a board.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. I appreciate that, I very much do.
Yeah, and I I appreciate you acknowledging that there's many players that help do this, the commissioners, we've set on different committees, different things. Help foster and bring them forward, so I appreciate you acknowledging some of the people that uh
Yeah.
that are the experts in that field.
Yeah, the uh we we have a line going out to Plush right now, of course, as you know. And our county road superintendent has been working with the 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 guy that ran the fiber in Hunter to make sure that that fiber is in the correct place along the easement.
In the right direction.
And and they're in the right depth, um which is which is really good and and maintaining that good relationship there is important. But um that line is gonna be going to Plush and then going down to Adele. And we've been in discussion with the first net early stages right now with uh with them to look at better cell service for the Plush and Adele area. And if we we believe that without going into too much detail as to where we're talking, we think it may be possible to provide very good cell service to not only Plush, but Adele and all the surrounding areas and and the homes up against the mountain in that area.
Okay.
And we think we can do it for a lot lower cost than what we were originally looking at. So that's very early stages right now, but if we're able to do that, um utilizing the fiber that's already going through there, uh we could, we can get internet to the homes. Right now, the fiber is going to the school, but if we can get in good internet to the individual homes and residents, that's what we really want to do. And not only would that serve good cell service for emergency purposes, but also, I mean, everyone's carrying their phones around these days and they turn into hotspots instantaneously and good cell services. That's what you're getting in your home, so that's big deal. And I I also want to thank uh Jack Thompson and Sarah Saranzen because they have been true champions of that project and I cannot stress that enough.
I I believe they were instrumental in making sure that the dollars got here and got on the ground.
We we they were, when I first came on, as you remember, one of our first meetings where Mr. Thompson came in and asked the board for support. Uh we believe that we have lost that grant. I I truly did believe that we had lost that and but through the hard work of Sarah and others, I think that they were able to extend that out and keep the project alive. And and as a result, we will have fiber in Plush and Adele. And so.
Lot of appreciation from the board, grab this white melody if anytime you think necessary, you can go.
Yeah, public acknowledgement of the fact that that there are a lot of heroes and champions in our community that really care.
Yeah. There's a lot.
And I think that's really what makes us a good place.
Well said, thank you. Anything else?
Not for me.
Alright, we're gonna adjourn now for fourteen minutes.